And does the ECL order for the record? Today is Monday, January 3rd, 2022. In the City Hall Auditorium, participating in person, I have Councilwoman Morgan, Councilwoman Wright, and Councilman Capnarrow, participating in this room. We have Councilman Manichia and Councilman Oliver. I do believe that Councilwoman Conum may be joining us over the late evening. So before we begin, please stand at that.
Adieux to the United States of America, and to the great Congress, and to the stands, one nation, one empire, universal, liberty, justice, law.
So the first thing on our agenda is, agenda this evening is public comment. Before I call for a motion for a public comment, I wanted to take this opportunity to make a few public comments of my own, to acknowledge the retirement of our City Planner, Marty Connor. Marty, who has worked for the city for over 22 years, has been instrumental in cleaning the road for the city of Torrenton, that brings us to this point in time where I consider as well positioned to not only embrace development that is occurring in the city, but set the stage for future developments. On personal note, when I was first elected mayor eight years ago, Marty and his team and the land use offices were instrumental in helping us build a team with our development office, with our building department, with our public works departments, that really did establish Torrenton as a force to be reckoned with on a state level with developers and with other municipalities. I would often refer to this team as my dream team because very honestly, it was so much of Marty's vision that we were executing, and he knew better than anybody that creating that vision and building capacity through public engagement was really the reason we were so successful. So I have a little something I'd like to present to Marty. You can meet me at the microphone. So it's a citation that I wish to present to Marty Connor, City Planner, October 4th, 1999 to January 7th, 2022, in recognition of over 22 years of devoted service to the city of Torrenton. For your service in the city, we use a significant contribution to the community. Thank you for your hard work, dedication, and commitment. You have served Torrenton and its residents well, and with pride and honor. Our sincere congratulations, and best wishes of good health and retirement on behalf of the City of Torrenton. Well, the real question, one from Marty, long before I was elected, well, and one before I was a member of the City Council, one of the ladies here, is community engagement, community engagement, community engagement, and the great work of the citizens we've done.
Thank you.
Oh, my word, yes, I do. I see this smile. Come on the right.
Thank you for those kind words, Mayor and City Council. It really has been a pleasure working for the city all these years, and I did really enjoy that part of the job, being engaged with the community. It, it really is important to me that we keep the momentum going that we have. We have a great team. I told the mayor and all the staff in a planning meeting this afternoon that working with the team that we have, it is a pleasure to come to work and we get so much more done. So thank you again for the opportunity of letting me work for the city, and it's been a great career and I've really, really enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Good night. I joke with the open meeting, the ladies meeting is our first Monday of every month is meeting the annual joke of the net. We all have this cell phone number, so you really can't get away from us. So thank you, Andy and Marty, and thank you, Jan, for sharing them with us. You've been a great partner and the community knows you just as well as they know Marty and we such and such, such a great support as you are. We are still open to the public and we're ready to take the motion. I will entertain one now to open the meeting to the public in the course of section four is the Council, WEC, and the rules of procedure. Second back, Councilwoman Wright, Father Famer.
Aye.
For open the public, is there anyone from the public wishing to request the council?
This space. Just to add my own comments, working with Marty, myself, with State Champion and Torrenton Downtown Partners from the very beginning in 2010 has been a wonderful experience. He's been there helping us with all the answers as we meet with new tenants and renovate apartments and businesses. So again, thank you, Marty. I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up tonight. First is regarding the new bulk waste proposal. As a former elected official, I wanted to speak about this. The bulk waste permit, while free, will be required in order to dispose of both household items. Sometimes in our eagerness as elected officials to correct wrongs or make worthy improvements in process, we have more less parents than representatives of the city. This new permit announcement has confused and upset quite a few residents. I understand the reasoning behind implementing this action, but I feel strongly that we underestimate the ability of our residents to help us as a city to address a major concern. Sorry, I can't hear this. We need to help our city address a major concern occurring increase in trash disposal costs which will impact budgets almost immediately. In addition, I know that we have residents who understand the protocols firmly in place and even contact the hall or when they place something at the curb. I had two phone calls about this over the weekend as well. I also know that while we got upset at the number of mattresses placed at curbs and placed blame on tranches and multifamily homes, we forget that mattresses can now come in a box delivered by FedEx, and FedEx does not take the old mattress as mattress sales companies are required to do. We all agree, which when we remember the fiasco several years ago, when there were presentations on buying special trash bags. At the time, several of us offered to help create a committee or team to help the city involve the community in finding ways to reduce trash and improve recycling. We have to reconsider approaching these issues as if we are parents doing this for our own, your own good, but instead appreciate our residents. I continue to believe that involving our residents, businesses, schools, and organizations in major campaigns can go a long way to create new habits and address this issue. The evidence that this work shows daily is most of us wear masks without complaint and carry reusable bags when we go shopping. And as I have said in the past, I'm still willing to help build a team to work with the city on this issue. Now to the other point. First of all, I want to thank Rista for all of the work that she's done on various projects along the way, and I am personally really excited about the Royal Square project. I was at that touring to watch her at in 2015. I have followed along with Torrenton Trails and the routing study and the parking study and East Main Study and the Crossback Street meeting. I think we're doing a really great job. We're moving forward progressively, and that's really cool. I'm also excited that we are finding a place to ski the diner, and this is a hope that the Torrenton Starful Preservation Trust has thought, wanted to fulfill. The improvements, improvements on Mason Street part of the original package, yes. The improvements on Water Street were not part of the original package, but I think that we should be really looking at that anyway, whether we can go forward with this project or not, because I think it's really important. I totally agree with the resolution to authorize the mayor to submit the application to the state. I have some concerns about giving authorizations to execute and deliver in the name or behalf of the council. We should be adding a codicil to approve at a later date. My concern is that while I realize the Crossback Street project is imminent, adding sizable improvements is necessary regardless, but speaking as a member of the public, my concern is in giving authorization to partner with as yet unknown private partners on this project. I feel it will be approval, but that council should be provided a list of these private entities and their potential extent of involvement, whether it be financial or agreements on property use. That was all I had. Again, thank you, Rista and Mayor, for continuing to proceed with the things that will benefit our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Still open to the public. To be right into our record.
There's a letter from Thomas Kavanowski regarding public comment on Resolution 143-225. Dear Mayor, Ms. Malaka, and members of the City Council, it has come to my attention late this afternoon that the City Council is being asked to vote on Resolution 143-225 as part of this evening's meeting. I am writing today to express my concerns with some elements of the plan. This is a self-described high-level ambitious plan and will have significant impacts to residents and property owners. My major concern with this resolution is that it calls for a portion of the downtown greenway to potentially cross directly over my driveway at 1065 Pearl Street, utilizing an existing nine-and-a-half-foot right-of-way that was established years ago when the property was a part of the Belly Coal Company property. My home has since been separated by this property, and the 9.5-foot section where the greenway is proposed sits just 20 or so feet from my front door. In fact, my property is fully enclosed by a chain link barbed wire fence and has been for many decades. That is, it is a less-than ideal location for public traffic. It is now and has been used completely for residential purposes. This plan would expose me to great liability as the trail is normally separated from my property. I have serious safety concerns for both myself and the users of the trail, should it be located over my driveway. Quote, "The minimum width for a shared-use path is 10 foot, and wider pathways, 11 to 14 feet, are recommended in locations that are anticipated to serve a high percentage of pedestrians," end quote, from the AAHTSO Guide for the Development and Bicycle Facilities 4th Edition 2012, Section 5.21. The existing right-of-way is only nine-and-a-half feet wide, which means any proposed trail would not even meet minimum industry standards. As my driveway arrows, the only entrance or exit to my property would be directly over the right-of-way. This poses a serious safety risk to vehicle operators and pedestrians. I've had very little consultation regarding this plan. I currently sit on both the inland wetlands commission and conservation commission and have always advocated for an open, connected, trail-networking city. In fact, I was one of the founders of the Torrenton Trail Network. However, I do not see how this proposed route over a residential driveway is consistent with the Torrenton Plan Conservation Development. Quote, "A major goal for the city of Torrenton is to connect open spaces through rail-to-trails and rails-and-trails networks," end quote, from the Plan of Conservation and Development, Section 5-1, 2019. The proposed route would best serve residents of Torrenton if it was designed as a rails-to-trails or trails-by-rails route. This would more efficiently connect the downtown areas to the Winstead Road area. The Plan of Conservation and Development also calls for continued unified cooperation between residents, city, and state agencies. Item at page 22, test 5-3. The city has failed to consult the neighborhood with respect to the trail routing, the proposed parking lot, or the relocation of the diner. While well-intentioned, the plan appears to be rushed. A more appropriate location for any proposed downtown trail would be to naturally follow the existing railroad. I encourage the city to work with the state, the lessors of the railroad, and other nearby property owners to facilitate this plan. Following the railroad would create a strength path which connects directly to the North Elm Street entrance of the Red Mountain Trail that the city already owns. As proposed, the trail would zigzag through a parking lot, directly across my driveway, and empty in the center of Pearl Street, far from any other connection to the Sioux Rosewood Trail. Should the city move forward with this plan, I would request that they involve every impacted landowner before committing to a final plan. Sincerely, Thomas Kavanowski.
Thank you, Carol. Any duly drafted package, also email to all council members. Okay, all right. So kind of all for public comments. Saying your number, we're moving to item.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, what was his name? That gentleman's name?
Tom Kavanowski.
Kavanowski?
Kavanowski. K-A-L-I-N-O-V-E-S-T.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to item number two. And maybe the questions raised by both chairman of the board and in this letter will be addressed in the presentation that is about to follow. But for now, inland wetlands declaration, I would like to take a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Alexis Akrisi as a regular member of the inland wetlands commission to fill the remainder of a three-year term that expires September 4th of 2021.
So.
Second, the council needs your votes. Questions on the motion? There are one on the table?
Aye.
And three, I would like to take a motion to accept the Corporation Council's recommendation to transfer two portions of city property between Bessie Park and the Torrenton High School middle school property for zoning setback purposes as described in the triage mail now dated January 3rd, 2022 regarding a land swap. Go on second.
Second.
I heard second from Councilman Manichia. All right, and the floor is open for discussion. Vic, did you want to?
I have, now it's unattached, so I can answer questions. If anyone has any questions, if you can refer to the memo and the last attachment, because there's math with that. It shows a very thin line from the arrow pointing to the one, with a triangle with the arrow pointing to that. This is, was considered to be a lot line revision, which was authorized by the planning zoning commission, right, is here. This memo is attached as well. This is to meet setback requirements of the zoning conditions. Both of these pieces of land are owned by the city, of course, so in one sense, we're transferring land to ourselves. But what the difference is, in one case, we're transferring, transferring that little long strip of land from the park that the city owns at Bessie Park to the school building committee for the use of the school. And on the other hand, that little triangle down the bottom of the map is being transferred from the current use of Torrenton High School to the city for use at Bessie Park. They're identically the same size in terms of square footage. This, this transaction is largely required so that when it goes, when it comes time to record these documents, and the city's, what is the city's land records, it will be recorded with an affidavit by the GAT stating that exactly what happened here tonight. In fact, the planning and zoning commission requires a lot lines, and therefore it would allow the, the town clerk to properly index these documents that have been looked for the future use, because it will be a little bit confusing in the future to see that the city is moving land, say, transferring land that in port they are held. So, it's funny, but that's, that's the explanations and questions, and I'm glad to try this.
Questions?
It's required, I guess it's required, this is then requested from the school building committee.
That was actually my question, I just want to know that this was, this was acceptable in any course with what the organized school building committee class?
Yeah, and Marty used here as well to answer, because he worked closely with the building committee, Mr. Allen, Mr. Lemon, with them.
Yes, Councilman, we discovered this as we're working through the plans for the new high school, we were going to have a find-out setback problem, and you can see it's very small. So that, this was my suggestion to resolve that, because it would make no sense for the building committee to have to go to the zoning board of appeals and request a variance for a building that hasn't been built or, you know, but this will work out in everybody's favor, it's an equal swap, it makes perfect sense in my opinion.
Yeah, Kirk is agreeing to this.
Thank you.
And I would only add that keep in mind, this, as you heard Chairman Michelle saying, this is city property, city property, city property for use of school purposes, and the other city property, the park, is actually Bessie Park, it was part of the gift that was given to the city. We always have an obligation when there's a gift made to honor the intent of that gift. So when we asked the building committee if there was a way for us to do this as an equal land swap, they did a great job of identifying how that could be accomplished, like square inch for square inch. Other questions or comments before I call the motion? Right here, you can now not call the motion, all with favor.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Enter the record, I notice that Councilwoman has to address. Okay, so moving into item four. I will take a motion to authorize a tax abatement for 104 Main Street as described in economic development director, Winston Malinas' letter dated December 27th, 2021. And for the record, I'll read it into the record. This is with regard to property that we have come to know as a living building, which has been renovated for the purposes of apartments and commercial space. So do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Wright. Go to the second.
Second.
The second, and I'm on, all right, the floor is open for questions.
So could you go over the actual, you know, six years?
Yeah. So first, do you want to talk a little bit about our policy? And then I think the right thing in our policy was a spreadsheet to show what we impacted or requested over the city of Torrenton. So I can insert one word, but behind the application, the application, which is two pages, our policy is two pages, so I'll put five of the package.
So this property is in our downtown district. Section four of our policy encourages the rehabilitation of buildings that are over the 30 years, this building in the Winstead Road Act. So the rehabilitation has increased the property by more than 50%. It actually increased the property 203% here. The original value before any work had started was $189,530. The new value, what's the commercial one, is completely hit it out on the bottom, is So that's a change in assessment of $385,130. So that, that meets the requirements of the downtown section four. And what the policy allows is the taxes will never be less than the original value. So the first year, there's no increase in assessment, but over the next five years, the increase in assessment increases 20% the first year, 40% the third year, 60% and then 80%, so the sixth year ensures a 100% of the new value.
So you can see the estimated tax, that spreadsheet is roughly $54,543. I can tell you that this building, there's clearly a significant investment that was made in the building. There's 17 apartments in the building, and I do believe that all of them are currently activated. And what Mr. Caprari is seeking is working capital through this tax abatement so that he can complete the commercial space on the first floor. That commercial space will provide additional retail in the downtown markets and jobs, and that's the reason why this request. Other questions? Councilman Manichia.
What, in what year does it start? 22, 21? Did it already start the abatement?
So we will work with the property owner to finalize the agreement once we get the final settlement. In this case, I believe it will be grandest, what year are we at? 2022.
Is it 10/1, 2021, and the taxes will be due July 1, 2022? So is that management ready to see this?
Well, I don't know. So I don't know when the, I have to look and see when that value went into place. If it was in place on October 1st, 2021, it will be that, if it's not, because this is the estimated value, once the commercial fit out is closed. So I'll have to look at the two grand lists and see when that increase came into effect, which grand list it came into effect. Sometimes it's a throwaway piece of the year, and we don't typically give any abatement on the twelve weeks portion.
We know that, Mr. Ian, everything that was just said, and that's a little off of what I'm asking. Do you need explanation again?
I under, I understood what she said, thank you.
I think he asked a good question, because it's not identified in year one, whether that's going to be the 2021, which if we're actually voting now, we start in 2022.
Typically, it is that here, in this case, I'll just have to verify. It's looking at it.
I want to comment, I mean, I do think the building looks great, you know, I probably didn't suppose apartments, but if you look in the parking lot, you have it, it just looks really upscale apartments. I'd love to be invited to a building, but it really looks great, and he's going to use this to actually renovate the first floor for detail. I think that's pretty exciting. Is there any future plans that he's not group?
So what the, what his, his vision is for that space is to have a diner in the front and then have more retail crafter emporium in the rear portion that supports local artists or startups and crackers so that they have a smaller space to, to. or startups and crackers so that they have a smaller space to, to get seller wares and new products. Um, he is looking to do that fit out. He hasn't finalized what that looks like, but that's been his vision since the beginning, and it continues to be, um, what he's driving for.
Maybe he's staying there.
Yeah.
I guess. But yes, that's, thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions? There are none, well, there are none. I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No, no opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Rista. Um, you may still stick around a little bit. Okay, so item five, this is with regards to the resolution. You heard, um, public comments, um, regarding. So, um, it's all purposes of discussion. I will adjourn the motion to the draft resolution number one for three dash two five, authorizing the mayor to apply for EDCD fund through the community's challenge grant. To prove the railroad square project described in economic development director Malas' memo dated December 30th, 2021, and approve partnerships with private entities for the project. You have a motion? Thank you, Councilman, with your rights. In a second, please.
One second.
Thank you, Councilman, with your rights. All right. So I'm gonna give the floor to Rista to talk a little bit about, uh, the genesis of this grant and the project and to identify the partners, which I would agree appears very big in the element of this motion. So I'm playing this.
Okay, so this is a grant that is the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant, and it was put out, um, put out with some information to start with and then really kind of evolved to what it is today. Looking at how can you build vibrancy and livability in a community throughout the state? So as you mentioned in my memo, uh, they're putting aside 50% of these funds for distressed municipalities that have reduced the map to try to really encourage distressed municipalities to access these funds and improve the ability of vibrancy connectivity within their cities and towns. So these kind of plans do take quite a long time to, um, to come together. And so when we're looking at projects that would comply with this, this was the project that I kind of started to focus on and talked with, with the mayor and, uh, other departments, and thought this was the most feasible to get up and running in the timeframe that we had for the project, um, for the grant and to get the design done in the very short shovel running time that they want, uh, these projects to move forward. So I will answer any questions you have, and I just wanna address both Sharon and Tom's comments before, um, I do that. Um, based on Tom's comments and his questions, I did revise the map a little bit. Um, I just wanna hand out a couple of these for you. I did email them.
Which one did you share?
Yeah, this will be the map that shows the trails and the, yes.
But I will also share the, um, if you want to.
So, well, Rista's making her go back to my comment. Just so you know, the information about this grant came out in late October. We had literally 60 days to pull together something that we thought would be shovel ready, that we already had some, um, some stake in the game by way of infrastructure improvements that had been budgeted for through the body projects and through planned improvements on the streets as it related to property the city owned behind Christmas Village. So when Rista says it was pulling something together that we thought would fit the parameters of the grant, it also made sense because we had already, over the last few years, identified some critical investments in this area that had nothing to do with grants. So it kind of came together rather quickly. So if it feels rushed, trust me, it's because when you hear about these grants, you literally have 60 days to pull a grant out of your hands. So, good choice.
So, um, while this, this compilation of plans is a little bit rushed, um, there's been a lot of planning done to get us to this point. And one of the plans, and I'll touch on a couple of them, is the routing study that we did for the, the Greenway. Um, you probably recall several years ago, we got an OPM Smart Growth Grant that performed a routing study connecting a five mile extension of the Superosman from Harris Drive to the city. It does show alignment, uh, similar to Tom, where Tom said along the rail. Uh, but in a lot of areas, it does vary from the, the trail, or the rail, uh, because of a bunch of different issues. Uh, in this case, um, uh, you know, I'm very, we're very open to working with the property owner as to which, uh, which path is the best. We do have an easement on the right, um, although it's narrower than we prefer. Uh, we do not have an easement, uh, on the map to the left, but we showed it can go either way. But I think that even more important in, in, you know, uh, we will work with the property owner and talk about the, the correct placement and how to, how to work with them to make this go through there. I think even more important than this is if it comes to a fact where we cannot come to an agreement, that is not an important piece of this overall project. It was part of this project because it was part of the routing study, but we can very easily pull that back. This parking lot has been, um, you know, when it was acquired by the city, it was always had plans to be a parking lot. Um, as our needs, our parking demand increases, as our trail design, um, was in routing, this is the perfect place, not just for a trailhead, but also for a municipal parking lot to support the downtown, um, employers. So as they bring in more employees, if you places for them to park, they can park there to bring in people to support local businesses. They can come and park and walk. Uh, we know what it's like downtown or Warner Show. There's, there's always that need for the park, for parking. So we put, we changed this map a little bit, um, from when the original one that I sent you, uh, to show that, you know, project here is a little bit narrow. We'll work with this property owner to talk about the extension. It doesn't impact the budget very much. It doesn't impact, um, the project, so we can pull back, um, if needed. Um, but it, but it was part of a much larger routing study that was done with several public hearings. So, um, that's the reason it was included, but I'm, I'm hearing Tom. I, uh, agree with him and will pull it back. We'd have more conversations before that is moved forward, whether it's part of this project or in this substantial phase. The partners who are on this project, um, are identified. They are Franklin Products, the Nogba Truck Rail, and, uh, potentially the Torrington Historic Preservation Trust. When we originally talked to the Torrington, um, Historic Preservation Trust, the owners, Skis, um, they weren't so sure. They wanted to be part of this. Um, as they began talking amongst themselves, we did have a meeting with Mark McCarron last week, at the end of last week, um, and he did say that they would like to be considered. So we are having a meeting with them on Thursday, um, to, to talk this room then and finalize the Skis portion of this. But it does seem favorable, um, but I, I don't know where that's gonna end up. So some of the, the vagueness in the resolution is clearly just because we don't know if they're a partner or not. If you're more comfortable being more specific, we can. We do know that the other two partners are Franklin Products and the Nogba Truck Railroad. And I can talk a little bit about that as well. Uh, the Nogba Truck Rail brings up our, uh, you've probably heard of the Torrington Twilight Express. It came every Saturday from, I believe, July to October this summer. Pretty much sold out every time. It dropped off about 100, 150 passengers in downtown Torrington at 5:00 or 5:30 and picks them back up at 7:30. Along with this, they get a handful of literature encouraging them to support local businesses, and our businesses did report that they got a lot of traffic from this train. It was very, very popular, and they're planning now to, to run from May to October. Um, and possibly even add other nights and other routes and different things. They did run a special Christmas bourbon train in December, so they're trying to use this more towards, um, for now. Um, well, when you get off the train, you've seen that, that platform. It's cracked. It's not safe. It's dark. There, there's not a very welcoming, uh, platform, literally, to Torrington. Um, so we started talking to them about how can we repair that and fix that. Um, as those repairs get made, there'll be some railroad crossing and track improvements that need to be made, and they've committed to make those improvements as we make the platform. We've also been talking to the historical, uh, society of preservation trust, um, and the Nogba Truck Railroad about bringing back that historic look of a covered canopy. What did that look like? What was that historic character of that, that station? How can we bring that back, make it inviting, uh, put some lanes and signage and really welcome people to the city? So all of that is part of this plan. Um, with the rail, working with them within their right way. Franklin Products, um, as you know, purchases property and they are using the front half as parking for their employees. The back half, they had a lease from Kelly Transit, and in 2019, they disappeared, uh, and left that property the way that you see it. Shortly after that, COVID hit, and they were severely impacted by COVID, so they have not made much investment in cleaning that area because they've really been focused on, um, keeping their employees and keeping their business running. We've been talking with them, and they are a lot of the partners in the city. They wanna work with us and they want this to improve this. So they're committed to repaving their parking area and cleaning up that back part that was, uh, where Kelly had their, their home for several years. By being a partner, we're able to leverage their private investment and bring in additional grant funds. They're willing to give us an easement that shows this, uh, public sidewalk that kind of bisects their property, giving you additional access from the train. Um, and connections to the trail and the parking and the, this area. Um, the other point I just wanna mention is Mason Street, um. If you go up there at night, even though, you know, Bed Dog where we might be hopping and there is people, very few people park there. The perception of that parking lot is it's kind of dark at night and it's not very safe, and people don't wanna be there. But it's a significant amount of parking that can support our local businesses downtown. Um, so by making these improvements, we add, um, on John Street, there's a left turn, uh, right turn lane. So we eliminate that right turn lane because we no longer need it. We get additional parking in there, lighting, signage, and make it a very welcoming area for people that they can park anytime of day or night, um, and to for our local businesses. Uh, the trail is part of this, and as, um, as we develop these plans, um, a little bit more, there, there will be public input as to these. The, everything in here is very consistent with our plan of conservation development, our master develop downtown master plan, um, the, our routing study, our other different plans are kind of pulled together. The, it's the, you know, the devils in the details. So those details will be brought before, uh, a public meeting and receive public input, but the plan's just not ready there to, to seek that public input at this point. Um, we've been working very hard to work with our partners, identify what level of partnership they will be. Uh, we had a meet with the state railroad department, um, to make sure that everything we're proposing is within the Nogba Truck Rail lease, and it is. Um, and then just the, the regular, uh, street and sidewalk improvements that make this, uh, cohesive area of our downtown. Just a natural extension of being downtown. So you can, uh, you know, come to Christmas Village and feel very at ease, like naturally walking down to one of the restaurants on Main Street. Right now, that kind of feels a little disjointed. This would help fix that. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I know I gave a pretty lengthy memo too. So I don't wanna go over everything that was in there. So I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, discuss, um, anything further that anyone might want to.
Great. But probably, but the question is, I just wanna expand a little bit on why this project was the focus, uh, for this plan purpose. So some of the, uh, drivers for developing the parking areas, you know, as you all know, uh, the parking lot right behind the YMCA, um, as Rista has said, is not very well lit. It's not very welcoming. There are parts of it, uh, on the, uh, the southernmost boundary, um, that are very much unlit. Um, and nobody wants to park in that area. Um, during the, uh, school year, that parking lot is filled during the day by school teachers. We do not, it's a, an agreement we have with the, um, Toronto Public Schools that the teachers park there for free. The parking lot is for, if you go there eight thirty in the morning, uh, anytime between September 1st and June 30th, you will find that parking lot filled to capacity. If you go there at four o'clock in the afternoon, you will find that it's pretty much empty. As we continue to see, um, our properties on Main Street become mixed use developments such as the living building, which he actually has named that building. What is the name of that? Clayton's, the Clayton, yes. Um, those tenants, um, are looking for overnight parking, and this is, this is the parking lot that we'd be pushing those overnight parking permits to. So we recognize a little bit of conflict with the demands for parking in this parking lot. So three years ago, the council members that were, um, on the council at the time will recall that the Kelly family was trying to settle an estate that had been open way too long. I believe this property was part of the trust. They needed to make a final distribution so they could settle the estate, and they came to the conclusion that it was easier for the city to take possession of the property, deal with the environmental concerns that existed on this property. And the reason the city agreed that it was a property that posed great, uh, potential to fill a need for the city was because we recognized that if we could expand the parking lot opportunities for the public schools and move those teachers to a parking lot, um, that was still convenient to the school, it would open up this public parking lot. This parking lot would serve as part of a trailhead. It would also serve as, um, parking, much needed parking for the Christmas Village during the holiday months. So maybe we recognize where the parking needs would be addressed. After Torrington Savings Bank completed their expansions and renovations, uh, they came to the city and they identified that they also needed more parking. And right now, they are doing a hodgepodge of parking at the historical society behind the church. Uh, and they're, they're, anywhere they can find a parking spot, they're sending their, uh, their influence to those various points, uh, through the downtown area. Um, so we recognize that there is a growing need for parking downtown area and expansion of these parking lots. Makes sense. Uh, that Skis diner, I don't know that Rista identified it clearly enough, for those of you that are trying to read this map as she's talking. I don't know if you wanna go at this, Rista, and just point next to Christmas Village where we're talking about this Skis diner. I will tell you that we have been working with Torrington Historic Preservation Trust for the past eight years and trying to help them identify where this, um, historic diner could be placed. We looked at every small piece of property. Uh, they very much want it to be in the downtown area. They very much wanted to be used consistently before it was, uh, initially, um, used. And, um, and they, for many years, wanted it to be connected to a building so that they can expand the kitchen and use the dining bar for dining. Uh, when we first approached them to talk to them about three years ago about locating the Skis diner in this area, which the city was part of the city's acquisition from Kelly Cameron, they weren't interested. And the reason they weren't interested is because none of these other improvements that you see on this map were going to happen. Skis diner and that location with no additional improvements downtown would then align a railroad track that was underutilized. with then along the railroad track that was underutilized and not very attractive, overlooking a vast wasteland that hasn't been very well maintained, there's some semblance of demolition from buildings that existed there, um and there's no guarantee with the train. So three years ago, they did not find that very appealing and they declined our offer to engage the conversation. When we started looking at this grant and looking at all the potential, all of a sudden, Toronton Historic Preservation was more interested. While they are, the conversations with the public members have been very fruitful. Uh, fact of the matter is, they don't need to until Thursday this week, at which time they will take a vote on whether or not they want to uh work with the city on that location. Um, we're very optimistic that they will get there. But uh as you heard Rista say, the reason her resolution was a little less um specific on the partners is because we don't want to be preemptive. You want to give that Historic Preservation Trust an opportunity to go around that publicly and then we will be able to argue with those partners a little bit more um confidently. The um grant is uh five point six million dollar grant, is that it?
The the total project cost uh will be will now be five point six million.
Okay.
Yep.
So five point six million dollars. The reason we talk about pressures is because there's a rent match. And uh we've been working with our city engineer and Rista and sharpening their pencil, getting ballpark figures, what will it cost, what would it cost to uh clean up the um properties to pave this uh new parking lot, to um do some site development for the ski's diner and potential work uh historic preservation and completion of the uh historic restoration of the complex, um to put in the um the trails that will connect from Water Street to the parking lot behind uh Christmas Village, um to do the improvements along the railroad track. There's a match, that matches twenty percent?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent. So what we did was we went and looked at what are those improvements that we intended to make outside of and regardless of whether this one is uh graded to us. We know that uh the sidewalk work on Mason Street was a part of that bonding package in two thousand and eighteen. We know that we talked about the um parking lot behind Christmas Village. We know that we talked about improvements uh where we have Mason Street and um desperately needed sidewalk improvements on Water Street, particularly the portion of Water Street where you'll see Alfredo's Deli's uh and a couple of other retail um places exist. So we knew that those were improvements that we had already planned on making and when they put the dollar value of those improvements together, that brought us down close to.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that too, we were very um conservative in our approach as to what the city had planned and budgeted to do. So what we, even though there's a lot out here that has been part of plan, we we wanted to make improvements to, the match is is coming from um basically just the improvements on Mason Street. Um, Church Street and the sidewalks, um just the sidewalks on Church Street. Um, because those are clearly identified as roads that needed improvement, sidewalks that needed improvement listed in the bond. So we were very uh we were backed in bond and very conservative as to what numbers we wanted to pull out. I think um that, you know, we had the ability to to put a couple more, you know, Water Street into there, but we didn't want to do that. We wanted to make sure we were really leveraging money that we would have spent already to get more money. And so when we looked at this this grant, this match, we did look at that conservatively. I think that's um as we got talking about this, um we were talking about, you know, Christmas Village has some repairs that they have to do. So how can we take, this is new, this is this is kind of why this is still evolving when we talk about that. How could we take the money that they were going to spend at Christmas Village and leverage additional dollars? So you'll see that we um put in improvements at Christmas Village into this map. Uh, so that that's why the the number's a little bit different than my memo. Because again, we wanted to leverage every dollar that we're going to spend in this where, whether it's private or public money, to get additional funding um and not have to to cover the other money.
And that's the tip of the hand for the last piece of what's about to be put together. Christmas Village will be celebrating its seventy-fifth year in two thousand and twenty-two. So Christmas in two thousand and twenty-two is the seventy-fifth year operation. What we recognize is while we're looking at all of these infrastructure improvements, enhancement in parking, enhancements uh in the um the connection from railroad to John Street, uh enhancements of improving the aesthetics of the um properties uh that were that are um the former Kelly property and Franklin's parking lot. Um, we also know that there needs to be investment in Christmas Village. There would be a deeper, long-term maintenance. There needs to be some infrastructure um investments in this building. So we also rolled into this grant a sum of money that we believe will make those necessary improvements at Christmas Village. And that was sort of the the last little piece of this that tied it all together um that I think we made. This connection of, for those of us that grew up here in twenty-ten, where a road square, you remember railroads were salvaged, you remember uh Railroad Avenue. Um, this finally, after fifty years, seventy-five years, is starting to reinvest in that property um and restoring it to what I think was probably the intended glory of it. Utilizing funds we had already planned to spend on sidewalk and railroad. Uh, Rista has done quite good research on this grant, so is really confident that this fits all of the um intentions of that grant. Um, you see on the other um pages attached to this are some, we have some elevations of other improvements that were listed. Do you want this to just fill the screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there there's before and after.
So this is John Street looking from Mason south. You'll see the um the Mason Street parking lot or what I call it, the YMCA parking lot on your left. That's the before, the after with the improvements. And again, these are conceptual. Um, it would become a one-way, it would, there's part of a trail, as you can see, comes as much sidewalk as it is trail. Um, in the distance behind the runner, you'll see where that that connection is the um, is the connection that is proposed from the rail uh platform through that parking lot slash wasteland. Um, that would become more car-like, lighted, a more comfortable um uh pedestrian travel from the uh railroad tracks down to this area of the um of John Street and Mason. And then the next one is Water Street existing. This again is looking, this one is looking south west, southwest. For those of us that recall, shopping at Railroad Square, that's that building right there on the right. Um, you can see the sidewalks are in real bad shape over there and you also see that this is a very wide road. Uh, it leads right to the railroad track. Uh, when we've been talking with um the railroad, there's um insufficient crossing lighting. Um, in fact, it's a little bit dangerous. Um, so what we're, when we were approaching this, our our thought process was, how do we eliminate the dangerous situation that exists in that that conflict? How do we uh create something that is more easily uh traversable for the people that work at Franklin Products on the other side of this school sign here um to their parking lot on the right? Um, and uh and where the, where John Street then intersects with uh Water Street right across the street from the new Bed Dog Brewery that is the historic um fire station, um how do we make that an easier um cross for pedestrians? So below that, the next slide is again the concept. That building can be reused, it currently serves as storage for current employees. Uh, they are open to the possibility that uh that when they um no longer using it, they actually moved a lot of their equipment from their normal production line during uh COVID uh into that building. So they pivot and switch to um doing PPE during the pandemic. So uh so they recognize that that equipment uh as they go back into a regular production of air moving seat covers, um that that building would no longer be uh credit to their storage needs. They could be used for retail purposes. So you can see a little bit of narrowing of the road with improvements to the sidewalk, greening it up so that it is uh not quite as um urban looking. Um, makes it a little bit more comfortable um travel. Uh, and it would also improve and install uh the safety components that we need at that road, possible for conflict involved.
Yeah, so it's so to that point, you know, what we're proposing here does make that crossing um for pedestrians much safer. There are still some rail crossing safety things that that we want to work with the state on and we have met with the state rail about those improvements and the improvements that we're proposing do not give it any of those train, those train rail safety crossings. Uh, but that is a much larger project and federal approvals and federal dollars that go along with that. So we kind of left that rail piece out of this, but we did want to make sure that the improvements we were making fit two things. Improve safety for pedestrians as they're getting off the train and didn't interfere with any future improvements for those rail crossings. So this plan and concept does both of those things.
And the reason the timing of this um is um for two of us is with that infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress earlier in two thousand and twenty-one, um funds for that type of investment are available. Um, and our conversations with DMT would, when this lead us to believe that um that those possibilities are very well. Uh, the timing, the tight timing for this project.
And the other, oh sorry, the other safety piece that the mayor mentioned was their crossing uh across Water Street to John Street. This has been something that Franklin Products has been asking for years and as uh the brewery and more development came, they've been more and more needed for crossing, but that you see that as a mid-block on Water Street. Um, so there's been some concerns, but the only way to make that crossing safe and handicap accessible is to put a block out because there's a fire hydrant and a telephone pole in that area. And there there's no way with the existing infrastructure to make that safe. Um, so by making the road one-way, we're able to widen that um the curve on both sides and make that a safe crossing um there and and we sort of traffic, make the crossing shorter and handicap accessible.
So we talked about the children, boys, all the questions.
Well, yes, the enthusiasm that we have and actually the fact that you have referenced, you know, other downtown, you know, they have support. I absolutely feel like this area needs attention. I think, you know, with the good idea, I appreciate the timeline that you're in, in terms of through putting this application in support. And was it five million from the grant or was that in total?
That's in total.
So Franklin's.
Twenty-five percent of that, was it uh one point two million dollars, one point?
Uh, so out of that, uh five point six, there's about one point four million that is the city, one million of that. Or in general, one million of that is existing projects that do the bottom projects that, you know, so we did the budget, we broke it out by sections and those very few sections equal about a million dollars. Um, the remainder of that is some of the uh improvements at Christmas Village that were, that are already planned and also Franklin Products' um contribution to that. Um, so altogether, the city's, yeah. The city's investment would be the the bonded funds, um and then an additional fifty-six thousand dollars to to do all of these improvements.
One point four minus.
One point four minus the um portion of the projects that Franklin Products will be paying for, because Franklin Products.
Which is about two hundred thousand dollars, being current budget numbers.
So Franklin Products will be responsible for paying the own parking lot and they have agreed with us that they will do the um improvements to the green area. And in exchange for the cities uh working with them, uh they will give us a right of way, which is that line that connects the railroad tracks to John Street. And on that right way, the city will construct that um paved area that's lighted and.
That improvement is uh, there's sort of, it, it, right now, we're looking at what they're contributing and they leveraged an additional seventy-five percent on top of that. Those improvements are are significantly less than uh that seventy-five percent that are along with an additional of their credit investment.
So all told, we're somewhere around one point two million, four hundred. Out of the city's uh core numbers, because two hundred thousand were the line that Franklin Products take through as part of their uh their influence, their property. Out of the one point two, the majority, the vast majority of that is in our project. So it's the money that we funded in two thousand and eighteen, these were infrastructure improvements we included when we projected what we needed to do improvements on roadways and sidewalks. And roughly fifty-six thousand would come out of the operating budget and that money budgeted in the um twenty fiscal year in which the work.
Right, so I think what's confusing to me is just, you know, it's five point six total, potential freedom up to the one point two million. So the remainder of that are either.
So four point, four point three is the uh.
Correct.
The grant, the the.
Just the outset. The one point four is the match.
The one point four is the city match.
City and private investment match.
All right, well, that's a lot for your today. So again, I'm excited about the enthusiasm, I think, to Mr. Kellnalsky's concern. Anytime, you know, if you have a dream and you have a vision, an apocalypse can happen, it's certainly supported by other work that's been done with downtown development. I love the fact that when you don't garner the support of all of the people, you know, that it's going to touch, whether it be business or in this case with Mr. Kellnalsky, you know, his own properties, um, you know, we're falling short and I could do much better, you know, potentially have a better project, you know, because they might have some other intuitions, but I think then you also mentioned about having some public hearings at one point prior to this resolution makes it sound like we're going to give the authority to move forward with the actual application. Um, with, is that before uh public hearings are are done? Yeah, that's why the rush starts.
So this is, these are just conceptual, this is all concept. The grant application is due January fourteenth, when I say we have literally sixty to pull a letter of path. That's the reason we've been in this background.
Your order reference.
Yeah, that's.
Such a thing. Wait, we ran the applications to when, Kate?
January fourteenth.
Oh, in the state?
Yes.
When did they uh make this work?
The end of October.
The end of October.
Okay, so why, why are we just getting this done?
So a lot of this, a lot of this, you know, we're working with private developers, not developers, but private property owners. And the Toronto Historical Preservation Trust, it's taken a while to get to this point, even have a cohesive plan that we can be able to present and develop. So so all the pieces have been going together, you know, it takes a long time to pull them all together, so we finally have got it together. To this point, to show you exactly why there's still tire-level concept plans that we're pulling together and.
So with the application, you don't need anything more than the concept. We are not required to have the engineered plans, we're not required.
We're not tied to this?
No, absolutely not, and that's why when we got Mr. Kalanowski's home court acceptance, knew with his concerns, the first thing we did was say, all right. What if we, what if these property owners really don't want that trail connection to Pearl Street? What would it look like if you didn't get the trail connection? So on this map, you'll see no trail connection goes to Pearl Street.
But we're making a big deal about Christmas Village, I love Christmas Village like everybody else does. Oh, building an entire, how many parking spaces are there? It wasn't sure, how many, how many parking spots, spaces are we adding?
There is about a.
You guessed, I mean, about a hundred.
Well, so, so.
Now, there's probably about sixty parking spaces there, and this, and this is very conceptual, but let me, let me answer your question in effect and answer that. The problem that we're having with parking in this area is with schools. There are about seventy parking spaces that are utilized by teachers, cafeteria workers, administration, headers. At Global Rent One. And that. Has created a hardship between savings bank.
Fair enough, fair enough, I get that, fair enough. Where I'm going with this is this, number one. We break this down, I completely support going after the grant, okay? On the, on the, on the understanding that we are not tied to this. Mr. Kalanowski, right out of the gate, the very first thing we hear from one citizen, very smart and well-gauge, knowledgeable citizen. But right off the bat, he's shooting holes through this, this whole project, that's just one tiny segment of this whole thing. We have, we have community involvement, and so I, I support going out for the event. What I don't support, and I will not vote tonight to support. In, in keeping with that is the third part of your resolution as written there, where it says. That the city council will authorize the mayor to authorize to partner with private. Entities as deemed necessary for completion of this project. That to me actually aggregates to all of city council. We were elected to the city council and there are certain, and attorney Michelle can speak to this, when it goes to bidding. And and putting, you know, and and getting service providers in the city, the city, it's assumed the city company is going to improve things, particularly if it's over like forever, so a very small amount, ten thousand dollars. That's our obligation statutorially, okay? For the city of twenty, it's not me, it's not Democrat, not Republican. People far smarter, more capable enough generations to go put these protections in place for the process to play out, so that there are checks and balances on this kind of thing. We did five point six million or whatever these, again, the numbers are a bit rubbery here as well, but how, we did this big chunk of money come into the city. It is absolutely the obligation of the city council to review how that money is being spent and to represent the city, meaning we hear from the public at this, at this point. That we get local feedback on how this is going, you're going to have this very big, you're going to have this big parking lot over here for Christmas Village, but that's three weeks out of the year, okay? What is that parking lot going to do, who's it going to serve the rest of the time? And what else might we do, almost like, all those considerations from local people are valuable to me and they should be valuable to every elected official citizen. So where I am right now at this particular exact minute of this conversation is if the mayor is willing to delete that, that third resolution. From her resolution, I will support this. If that stays in, I'm not willing to aggregate my responsibilities as a city councilperson to be involved in approving. How this money is being spent going forward.
So I, I agree with what you're saying, I, I support that. The, the grant does require a approval to partner with the private entities, so if we can put in. The name of those three private entities, being Franklin Products, Nautica Rail, and Toronto Historical Preservation, is, can we do that? So it's not wide open, it's amongst those three partners.
Those are the three partners, and the only reason I'm reluctant with it was is because they're in store for preservation trust meetings and first date for that mess. Really didn't want the overall preemptive.
And the three more, I got, I got Frank, but I got, did you say, what else was the third one?
The Nautica Rail.
Oh, another rail, okay, right, and their area, I mean, they are specifically. They don't have any other holdings or, or, or in, in, in joint, I think it's specifically the rail, rail's the rail.
They own, yeah.
Franklin is just Franklin, Franklin is not, they're not a partner with Waterways or they're connected to any other entity.
Yeah, that's a major factor in that, right across the street.
Okay, they are standalone, that's. Then, then I would support that. If that is, that, that specifically is written in.
So in the form of motion, that is.
But how, let me just think about this one, it may be difficult, but we still have to, so you're gonna, so we're saying you're gonna enter.
We're not entering into anything, we are absolutely not entering into any agreements with anybody. All we're looking for is permission or authority from the council to submit a grant. For five point six million dollars. But for a five point six million dollar project. Twenty-five percent of it would be match. That match would come from Franklin Products, Nautica Rail, and the city. Know what the breakdown of that is. Right. But again, to Councilman Kevin Harrell's point, not a single dime is spent on this project, not a single.
No, I get it, but that.
Until the engineering is done, until the bids have been permitted, until the bids have been put out and come back and contractual is signed. That's where the council has absolute final authority on everything. Nothing gets spent. Or moved forward, even with design days, without this council to approve.
I would feel better if that nineteen percent here, then they put a motion, so.
And if we could do it in the form of motion, I can't put it in the resolution, but I can do it in the form of motion, so it'll be a record. And you could make that too, you could make a motion to approve the resolution as modified, as you want it modified to reflect the partners. So that could be, you know, five A is the resolution, five B is. That, you know, that there will be a, upon a whole, we might not even get this.
I, I understand.
This, this may not even be awarded to us, in which case we spent a lot of time putting together a concept that was never going to be funded by the state.
Understood, understood.
So that's why I'm saying in B, you could, you could put that for yourself in there.
And I think, you know, I brought this up because it is a rush and I've done my several grants before in the past, that I know that you have to present something. That is going to. Really sell it, and so I think you've done a great job, in my opinion, and it's wonderful for what we're just doing, but I think. To Councilman Kevin Harrell's point, you know, having that resolution change identifying partners.
And having that final approval of, of, just, just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't weigh on that issue, but I do think that to know, identifying partners in that part of the resolution. Strengthen the resolution. In B or not.
Mayor, could I just also say that it has to go through all the, the regular land use. You know, procedures as well, so it's a long way out, but this is a concept that does tie together a lot of things we've been working on. And, you know, I would urge you to support it so that we could at least try to get the, the grant.
Well, I do support it, I just want the language to, again, this goes back many, many years where there have been occasions. Again, the whole idea of the bid process, they're put, they're, you know, very specific reasons to protect their owners and taxpayers and all that, this is. And in, in times of emergency, I rarely have I approved doing that, you know, by passing the normal bid process, but I have, when, when. You know, when there were exigencies, when things had to be done quickly, I did do that. And it's unfortunate that this seems to meet that, but it would make me feel better if it was just indicated, the language is saying, it just seems to be to partner with private entities. That goes very close to the language we use when we want to bypass the bid process, it comes very close to that.
Well, there's no, 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 when we're asking the council to waive this wage process, that language is very specific. You know, waive the wage process because we're purchasing on the state contract, because this is a sole source vendor. No, this is absolutely far from asking the council to waive any of that.
And I think the other piece too is the private partner is not the partner that's going to do the work. The, the private partners are the people who have control over the land that this project will be on, so that that's not, not part of that big process. Because they're not doing the work.
So I think what would make me feel better, for us, but it's, you know, when the application was announced in October. You know, maybe, and I know this is an election, some election, etc. But at some point, you know, communication, you know, the council just said, we're very excited, you know, it's not too late to submit an application versus a week forward, you have to submit it. And it just, I think it engages us, you know, okay, this stuff that's happening on Water Street, it's, yeah, I'm thrilled, because. You're absolutely right, I've done that training pass. And it's.
And, and I apologize.
Come on the train and.
I apologize to that, mate, you know, like you say, I'm, I was a little bit worried bringing something that I didn't know, have any concrete answers or, or ideas for. But I, I will bring, I, I apologize for that.
And, and I'm gonna just. Say for what I can tell you with Christmas, so we heard about this very late in October. It had nothing to do with the election and more to do with the fact that we now have to engage. Three private property owners. We had to engage Franklin Products. You know, they're the significant man of work here, that parking lot and that green space, they own that. We have to engage the Nautica Railroad. You know, and you can't do all of this like, oh, here, let somebody, everybody in the same meeting, and we're all going to sit in the, you know, in the auditorium and remember, pass this out. You have to do this in baby steps, is Franklin Products getting? We had a meeting with Franklin Products, well, it was the two daughters that remember it, then they had to take it back to their brother and their father. And then they got back to us, and after they got back to us, then we met with them and got a real one. You know, and they kept to go back to their board and then they follow us back. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, an early tip off, but this was such. A fine dance that we had to do with private property, and the last piece of it, to play on this thing, happened the mid-week last week. With Mark McCarron to talk about the rescue of students. So I, I agree, and I listened to Kristen's apology. It really was not her work if we didn't get those three private parties to the table. It's concept. If we get five point six million dollars approved, the project is approved, there's a lot of work to happen, and this isn't going to happen in twelve months. This probably isn't going to happen in twenty-four months. We're looking at a good two, three years before we see this work happen.
And I think more than the election.
Yeah, more or more.
The, the time that, you know, working around holiday schedules, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's, and people's vacation, and, and all of that to kind of that, that timeframe, so just to that.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even have your apology at all, because I appreciate the. The dance, like, turn, you know, assuming to the people that's are important.
Councilman Minichi.
Thank you, yeah, I have a question, because it is so far out. You know, as far as from concept to actually, you know, shovel in the ground. Are we confident with the five point six million dollar cost? You know, and that it's going to stay that way or close to it in two to three years?
Yes, yes, so a lot of this is roadwork and our city engineering department has some pretty. Solid numbers on cost per linear foot and square foot, we did add a lot of contingency and use the higher-end estimates. To, to kind of accommodate it at this level of plans, but a lot of this is driveways and roadwork and, you know, we knew that a lot, as our engineering department was. Was confident that these, that we could do this project within this budget.
And I would add that there's always, always, and I, I think, Councilman Minichi, who's former board of education member, Minichi knows. You know, what you value engineer, your project at this, you know, is there, is there a portion of the sidewalk work that won't happen because of class? You know, those are decisions that get made later on, but for now, what do we know? I know that in eleven days, this grant needs to be filed with DECD. I think what you have before you is, you know, just a high-level concept. We are respectful to the concerns about the trails, if those trail connections never cross a right-of-way into private property. Doesn't change the value, we're still going to get a parking lot that would not only serve Christmas Village for three months a year. But would provide parking for our schoolteachers and parents and cafeteria workers nine months a year. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's questions, I, I am grateful for the questions because. I have been kicking these tires on this concept for the last forty-five days, I gave Rista probably right Thursday afternoon when this was being presented for inclusion on the agenda. I was on the phone once again with Rista and Paul Cousins, kicking the tires a little bit more and. The last little drop that I couldn't give this afternoon, it won't get, is it maybe just a little before my platform, is if we're going for this money. Why wouldn't we improve Christmas Village, why wouldn't we improve those, include those improvements?
That's fine, that's fine, if I could, my, my last request, okay, again. I, you know, again, I have a very sensitive language and how that plays out, particularly to said persons. Would there, would there be an objection to this council to modifying the language of the third resolution of this to read, Mayor Eleanor Star, who is authorized to partner with private entities. As required for the completion of this grant application.
If I could. Are you, sorry, you're saying all that, and sorry, I'm, I'm speaking over somebody where I'm at, hi, everybody. So you're saying just to say who we need this grant application and not actually list out the specific partners? Is that what you're proposing, Paul?
No, no, I'm not, no, I'm saying. That we're just saying, again, she's partnering this worthy grant application, but as far as how, you know, whatever they're going to do further down the road. You know, by default, they come from the council for approval. Okay, we're just saying, worthy grant requires you to name to list these things, so we're listing these things, here's why we're listing to people without getting approval from the city council for these private people. The mayor has already worked with this, you are in on them, and further grant application, we have to do this, that's what you're saying, and it affects it's, it's a little bit more specific in.
So I think, so what are you trying, you're trying to, instead of giving your authorization to enter into a agreement.
So I'm saying deemed necessary.
Oh, yes.
Just saying as required for the management budget.
Required for the completion of grant application, as, as opposed to completion of this project to me, just seems to indicate that. We're, we're giving you a car crash to enter to a deal with these people and whatever costs it costs, you know, whatever. Is that okay, babe?
I think so.
Yeah, I would be comfortable with that language, if that's, if that's good enough for the grant application, that would make me feel more comfortable, because I. Definitely want to be supportive of this, this is a great project, but I just want to make sure that we're keeping it as closed as we can, so that you do have to bring. You know, any new developments and any new partners that you would have to bring it to the council first.
So then, the third. Second, if it's resolved, would read that the man owner of her own is authorized to partner with private entities as.
Who listed three there?
Frank, so then that paragraph, that the mayor, Eleanor Star's operating department is Franklin Products. Nautica Railroad and the Toronto Historical Preservation Trust as required for the completion of the land application.
Yeah.
So.
That's fair.
What, as you're pointing to the screen there. But I feel you were saying, well, what if there's another entity, you know, that might come in and why, why come back to the council, so.
I don't think this, I'm sorry, you say so, I don't. I don't think the state is going to object if we find a owner person that comes to the table. I think for the grant application, they're going to want to identify some of the partners out there. You know, our partners are this property owner that own the railroad. This property owner, they own this parcel of property. This property owner, they actually own Skeen's diner. You know, so if we can immediately identify those. I'm looking at Rista, as I say, is your concern that it's stating only for the grant application?
Well, I just want to make it clear, it's not required, a requirement of the grant to have private partners. It's a requirement of this, it supports the grant, but it's a requirement to do this project. So as required for, for this development, the grant requirement itself doesn't require private partners. So I, so we talked about grant requirements. It's, it's the required, it's to partner with them as required to complete this project.
But this resolution is only necessary for the current task.
Right.
The resolution is required.
Right.
Right. So I'm thinking that the council is correct. But if we make this resolution specific to the grant application. The project going forward, those partners are going to reveal themselves and remain to end up in M O P S with them. I'm thinking Skeen's diner is most likely going to be, you know, a land lease of some sort. All of which has to be approved by this council along the way.
And, yeah, public game. Just trying to keep everybody in their lanes.
Yes.
So.
So the motion was made by Councilwoman Walker.
To revise.
But they're very relevant in the West.
I have to use a secondary motion.
Please.
I, I make, I will make a secondary motion to revise the language.
So it's an amendment, right? Well, you think you've been amended originally?
Yes.
That's a Drake made motion.
Oh, right.
Drake made the motion.
Drake made the motion, correct.
So you'll let that.
That's another way of doing it. Just ask complimentary.
Yeah.
Okay, so Drake's amendments eliminates and approve partnership with private entities for the project. And instead will read authorize the mayor to partner with Franklin Products, an operative for a Toronto Historic Preservation Trust. As required or necessary to completion of the grant.
That's not, I guess, first, the, the.
So I have an amended motion to my amendment three.
Who's seconded the version? I didn't say the version.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Yes.
You know.
It's just a little stone somewhere back in the.
So I said it, then I did hear that conservation is in motion until Thursday, so hopefully they will not.
If they vote that they really don't, the preservation trust says they don't want to be a part of this. I may go back to the council. For a special, a quick special meeting to amend that reservation. Does that make sense? I will see Historic Preservation Trust, Lynn. So, Lynn, are you on the preservation trust? No. Are you voting yes?
That's what we're discussing.
I'm on the preservation trust.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, it's. Out of respect to that, to that entity, I, we have to approach that. Alright, so I have the motion. I have a second. More questions, additional questions? Alright, then the call for this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rista. Okay. I will, I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year. Twenty one, twenty two budget modifications as prescribed in control of the November, January third, twenty twenty two. This is controlled on this, which is scheduled to be in the eighteen. For a motion. Could be possible in the red. One second. They can have more than, and the floor is open for questions. Here is none. I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I have seven. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Yellow Fire Chief trust request to expend $5,850.50 from American Rescue Plan Act funds. For the printing and mailing of mass notification information by CCM Printing Services.
So moved.
Thank you. The T S second by Councilwoman, on questions. And I think, I know people still participate in. Chief Jericho. Chief, do you want to come up just a little bit about where we have with this mass notification system that's, it's.
Sure, I can, if I could share my screen, I can show you exactly what we're going to mail out. Ever see that? Oh, I gotta share. Nevermind. Okay, click the button first. Do you see that now? It says Torrington Alerts.
Yes.
So this is a eight and a half by five and a half mailing. It's every drop or every door drop mail through the post office. Basically, they give a handful to the mail carriers and they put one in every mailbox. CCM, it's an at cost printing. This is the, the front of it, right over here will be like the, they'll say the current resident with the address. They'll have up in the corner, the EDDM postage. And on the back is how you can sign up. Basically, you can just text to this number and type in Torrington. I think there's a lot of issues with this because you'll get a generic nixle.com. Post and then it takes a couple of seconds before the link comes into the, you know, webpage and I'll show you where it goes in a second. If you scan the barcode, it brings you right to the webpage or you can obviously text or just type in the alerts. This is on the backside. What you're going to get is this, it goes right to our, our city website. We created a page called Torrington Alerts through the mayor's office. And you just click the register. And this will bring you to Everbridge and we have our banner up there so you know it's us and this is where you sign up. Going through, there's this contact information, email address, and I would recommend one phone number. And then once that's in there, I'll show you, sign in and I'll show you exactly what. I don't know, this is going to work.
And one of these typically not out just now, I know that I have received a couple of phone calls. And it's Councilwoman O'Callaghan earlier today because there are questions about how to sign up for this. So I did ask Dave to spend a little time with us showing us how this, how easy it is to do this.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, no, no problems. So that's, so I actually logged into my account. Once you sign up and you get your, you create your username and password. Here's your, your subscriptions that you can select when you get in there. I selected them all just so I can monitor everything. But we broke it down into whatever people want to be able, you know, to sign up for. The emergency alerts you automatically get, that's through the E nine oh one system. That comes right from the state of Connecticut. That's authorized stuff that L C D would put out for like major events that everybody needs to be alerted to. And then people can select whichever one they want to do. If I don't want to do anything with parks and wrecks, I can just only select it. I won't get any notifications. So people can come in and select any one of these notifications that they want to receive information for. Informational updates would be, you know, anything that they want to do. There's a city council meeting tonight, six thirty, zoom in, whatever. Parks or wrecks, I know has a lot of programs with their book. The senior programs Joel does a great job over there. So we had something for him. You know, health alerts for area health. This is where we have all this COVID vaccination clinics, many booster clinics, any COVID testing. We're starting to start seeing a lot of COVID testing happening. We're a little bit behind the eight ball. I get this going with everything. So with the, with the, I'll get out of here. Never. Stop sharing here. But it's very generic, you know, system, very easy to sign up, just fill everything in and save it. Just make sure you, you keep your username and password so you can sign in and modify anything that you want. So with this mailing, it's going to hit all 14,000 residential homes. The, I was hoping to keep it in town for local businesses. You're talking over $10,000 for printing and mailing. CCM is an at cost for us since we are a member of CCM. So basically all the stuff is just at cost and the postage is where the big hit is. You know, it's over $4,000 in postage. And that's for anything. So I'm looking to get this mailing out. Right now we have 143, I checked today, 143 already signed up. And that's just hitting a webpage. I know we had a lot of issues with, with this home test kit stuff and I noticed the last four days is where we got a heavy load. So people must have been going to the website and seeing that for notifications, clicking on it, going to this page. So we're starting to get some, some process, some people signing up. Next stage, probably in the next week or two, once this mailing, you know, gets ordered, if, if I get the approval tonight. I'll get hold of, of CCM, you know, tomorrow morning and say, go for it. We'll start the P O process. And then we'll start training our people to, you know, how to do the notifications and incident. Because there's notifications and there's incident notifications. So there's two different things that we need to train our people for to make sure the public's up to date.
Thank you, Dave. So just as a reminder, the reason we went into this mass notification is, and I appreciate some of the comments that I've been hearing, as I said on the phone earlier today. Not only is the dissemination of the COVID test kits that way to happen on Wednesday. Something that would easily be or should be broadcast over this mass notification. But if there's a weather alert, you know, there's a parking ban, if there's road construction, you know, when we go into construction on Prospect Street. It's an opportunity for us to do a geo fencing of that specific neighborhood where the text alerts or the notifications go specifically to those property owners. But they'd update as to what's going on. So we need to get this out. We tried our social media broadcast. We did do a great job putting out those little cards that people could scan the QR code and register. But with only 143 residents registered to date, we recognize that this wasn't going to happen unless we did a targeted mailing. So the request again is for $5,850.50 out of the American Rescue Plan money. This qualifies, it's specific and one only needs to point to these testing locations that our public needs to be notified about. The M ninety five mask distribution and the test kit distribution to, to support the value of it. Open to questions from the floor. Here is one, I'll call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Hey, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Jericho.
Thank you very much.
I have eight. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax clerk to authorize the nine tax refunds indicated in length by the list dated January third, twenty twenty two. Thank you, Councilwoman O'Callaghan. Second, the Councilwoman Morgan. Questions on the motion? Here is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one. I'll entertain a motion to release the summer use lanes incorporation councils of January third, twenty twenty two. Councilwoman Morgan. Second, the Councilwoman O'Callaghan. Questions on the motion? Here is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. I have ten. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the finance.
A move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morgan. There is a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Minutia. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, we have a few department heads in the room. I'll start with Ray Drew from our public works.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Before we get started, just kind of want to pass some things out. For the council members that are Zooming in, I will email this to you tomorrow. So that you have it. I wanted to kind of get information into the council's hands. So then additionally, before I get started, just kind of talk about this. Bulky waste permit registration. I did want to introduce our new MSW recycling coordinator, Linda Orr.
Linda, do you want to join me up here?
So as you've, obviously, many of you probably have received phone calls. We've received many phone calls at our offices, the mayor's office. Former Councilwoman Wagner has indicated that she's received phone calls about this press release that we issued last week. So I just kind of wanted to give you kind of where we stand. I think you've all probably been reading the dire issues with the state and the future of MSW throughout the state of Connecticut. And the condition that Mira is in and what's going to happen and where we're going. You know, the path that we're on is not sustainable to us and it's not sustainable for us. I mean, if you start, as you go through this, I'll talk a little, just brief snippets from the various pages. Our recycling MSW yard waste collection, bulky waste collection is about $3.6 million in fiscal year twenty twenty one. This year, we're projected to be closer to $4 million. That is around 6.3% of the city's entire budget. So you can see that it has a significant impact. And so there are things that we have to start looking at. And putting some controls in place to improve our recycling. Increase the accountability for the, the waste that gets generated by our residents. We do believe, you know, I've preached the issue that we've had with mattresses for several years now. And I'm sure my predecessor had done the same thing for many years. Yeah, can you give us some answers? The Mattress Recycling Council for the state of Connecticut. Since 2015 has collected 775,000 mattresses. On that, that's an average of 129,000 mattresses per year. So on average, Torrington, we collect 4,300 mattresses or 3.3% of that total. And yet we're only 1% of the state's population. So, I mean, on a per capita basis, it, it does appear that we're collecting a lot more mattresses than we should be. What's that, council? So just kind of going through this, what I handed out to you. The first page is just kind of a bulky waste summary since 2011, the fiscal year eleven, twelve. What bulky waste has cost us and, you know, where it's going. The, the total cost in the green, you can see, I mean, it's, it's continuously rising. As well as the tons that we're collecting. The number of loads is, tends to be fairly stable, but with each load, they're just collecting more waste. The second page is basically the mattresses. Since fiscal year eleven, twelve. The estimated generation rate for mattresses for the city of Torrington based upon our population should be around 2,100 mattresses per year. Deeps per capita rate that they estimate as 0.25 mattresses per person per year would put it at around 900 mattresses. So you can see, I mean, historically, um you know, since eleven twelve, we've been well over the the twenty-one hundred mattresses. The third page, this is kind of MSW versus recycling, based upon tonnages. And you see, there's four categories here, the blue being recycling, historically, our recycling is right around twenty percent. The red, obviously, the most significant is the MSW, that's what is sent to Mira. Um on average, uh fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we are, we were at just over fourteen thousand tons. Um and then for the data for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, that reflects five months of data. To, so you have it in perspective. Um and then the the green being the bulky waste and then the uh. Kind of the purple being the yard waste. Now, we collect yard waste uh seven weeks out of the year, um four weeks in the. Spring, spring, two weeks in the fall, and we have one year, uh one week.
Two, four weeks in the fall, two weeks in the spring.
And one week of uh Christmas. Um all of that, it gets recycled, goes to Spring Industries um for recycling. And then kind of the last page is uh, you know, just kind of a bringing it all together a little bit on where we are with the cost. And how the cost over the years has been escalating. Uh fiscal year twenty twenty-one, well, in eleven twelve, we were at just over three million, twenty twenty-one, we're at three point six million. And then, like I said, with the mirror and what everybody's been seeing, or reading, um. There it is, we are in contract with them unless we opt out until twenty twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Um based upon uh presentation that were given by Mira, you obviously know that the plant is closing on June thirtieth. Or on or thereabouts, um and then different alternatives. Um highly likely land mega landfills out of the state of Connecticut, but the the tipping fee is projected. To increase between twelve and fifteen dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then by twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um in in the range of close to a hundred and fifty dollars a ton. Um so it is kind of that kind of gives you a background of where we're at. And um you know, as far as the bulky waste registration, bulky waste permit, the uh the the reasoning behind this. Was to get um who is, where we were collecting it, what we were collecting, and how frequently we are collecting. From particular addresses, are we collecting, you know, six mattresses from this house or residence? Um two, three times a year, so it's 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 really about collecting the data. Um which we probably don't have, what we have now is we get the tonnage and I get the number of mattresses. I don't get where it came from, I don't get uh um how often that that property, they picked up bulky waste from that particular property. Um so, you know, with that, and then, you know, obviously, bringing Linda on, I know she's she's got some fantastic ideas. I know that uh uh former councilwoman Wagner, uh one of the ideas is to. Develop that committee, that task force for, you know, to to address these issues. Um for the long-term sustainability, so that's kind of what we're looking at, I don't know if you wanted to talk a little bit about your ideas or your thought processes.
Sophie, while she's walking back to get that, I just want to remind those members of the council that were. Um working on the budget with us this past year, a recycling coordinator. And getting the candles on solidly, including bulk waste, were priorities that were identified in the budget process. The permitting system was discussed at length in the budget process, um I realize that was. Seven or eight months ago, the public certainly may have seen the headline last April about this. Um a lot of time has passed, so when the press release was issued about bulk waste permitting. I can understand where there may have been some, uh you know, some bristled feelings about it. Um but I think as you listen to Ray and Linda, this is consistent with what we budgeted for, what our intentions were. Um and where we're going uh in the future with this, so.
Quick question.
Sure.
Because it is a permit, it's an application, is, should it be vetted through the ordinance committee?
No, we have to know.
We didn't find anything where it that would was um required, I would defer, you know, back to the day that we interviewed that.
Really not much different than the permit you need for hazardous waste.
Is, yeah, I mean, every resident that wants to dispose of hazardous waste has to get a permit or a registration. Um in order to participate in that particular program as well. And these these terms actually don't even.
You know that people are bringing from other communities, you know, their mattresses, the Torrington, because we're. Pretty generous community, but um I'm not opposed to it, I just kind of in terms of process.
Yeah, I mean, and I can give you an example, so um you know, Middletown, um they charge, if they pick your mattress up curbside. It's thirty-six dollars for the mattress, and it's thirty-six dollars for the box for. So it's seventy-two dollars if they take a set.
So consulting the information that we have about bulk waste is anecdotal, you know, we, for those of us that drive by that one piece of property. And every month, you see a collection of bulk waste down near curb. You know, there's one single family house on Hyman Avenue, but I drive by two, sometimes four times a day. And it's always shocking to me, it's a single-family house, how often they have bulk waste up on their phone. And I don't mean a couple pieces, I mean lots of it, and there's the question, is it theirs? Do they have a friend who has a community that's bringing it in, and they're able to come up there and have it taken away for free? Do they own other properties in other municipalities and they bring it in? So this permitting system allows us to at least get a handle on who's abusing it. Um you know, who's, you know, who's using it responsibly. Um and we notice that with um multi-family homes, you're going to see more of that. We're going to see, you know, tenants turn over every year or every six months, and you're going to see. And there again, it begs the question that those property owners. Um perhaps burden the other taxpayers that don't use the bulk waste system very frequently. So it's a way to sort of get, you know, get some data on what's happening, so.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, that that's the purpose, we 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 need to get, you know, I I'm not trying to, you know, it's not intended to disparage any. Residents or, you know, um community members, I it's just that we need to get the data, so. You know, the frequency is, is this particular house, I mean, are we picking mattresses up for, you know, every three months or six months? And and you know, where is it coming from, um you know, but a lot of residents don't use the service. Um although, you know, if you go throughout the state, a lot, I would probably say, majority of the communities they either offer. They have a municipal transfer station and the residents can bring it there, they have to sign in, they have to show I D, they have to show proof of residency. And they can bring it there for free. Um but, or they have a bulk waste type pickup system. But majority of that do the curbside pickup, there's a fee associated with it. But we're, at this point, we're not looking for to implement a fee, what we're looking for is data.
Please, yeah, no next questions.
Just beginning, uh if outside, do you have any sense whatsoever, um let's assume the data, the metrics you're you're using are correct. There's basically three times as much of this stuff as there should be, right statistically?
Correct.
Okay, do you have any idea how much that is, again, people in Torrington versus outside?
Well, and and that's, council, that's that's the data we're looking for.
I think this is really the first time when I'm compared to doing this, I agree, but I I'm thinking, just in the back of my mind. Are people breaking the law when you do this, if somebody from another city comes in here and dumps, gets picked up, dump six mattresses. At some license in Torrington, are they breaking any?
So I had gotten a call, um it's probably, uh it's illegal dumping. Um but if it's a relative that's bringing it from another community. To a resident who owns property in Torrington, that's a legal dumping. Um I don't know, if you're not, you don't catch them, I've got a call when about five or six months ago. A woman saw a red pickup truck pull up to the neighbor's yard, dumped off four mattresses, and drove off. I mean, I followed the truck up Route Eight, you know, loaded with bulky waste. Um fortunately, he turned into Albrechtus on South King Street, so, um but. It's, you know, it's, I I've seen people emptying their pickup trucks into our tores. Into our our Torrington resident property, and, you know, took the license plate, reported it. Um you know, unless we can get that data, you know, we, you know, I originally thought, well, if I could put out a press release. You know, asking residents to, you know, what the issues are, what problems were happening, and to, you know, get information, but then. I thought better of that, because I don't want residents who think, if they think somebody is, you know, dumping illegally to engage those people. So.
And unfortunately, most of those, you know, this is, it's something you find on Facebook. You know, you'll see a post where somebody says, oh, I just saw this red truck drop off four mattresses on Riverside Avenue. And then we're scrambling to track it down so that we can find out, this permitting system actually is. Data collection, um and I think it's, you know, that consensus building also, at this point, as you heard, there's no fee. Um but um as we get deeper into this, we'll have a better idea of. You know, where those abuses are, and how do you really use this, or do you really have somebody who's.
Well, it's.
Putting out their word, I say.
Yes.
To your benefit and and benefit of, you know, against the officials. I mean, listening to you read that all, I had no idea, the size and scope of the problems. But as soon as you, as soon as, you know, and and the vast majority of people are thinking, you know, I'm, now, now they're gonna make me pay for something I've been doing for a long. And they're upset, however, as soon as you start mentioning the numbers, they have statistically a three times, which strongly implies that outside interests. Outside people are dumping into it, I think you will see a huge mood swing in Torrington residents. Uh in support of what you're trying to do, data collection, for the express purposes of basically trying to get a handle on outside, non-Torrington residents. Using our benevolence and our and our facilities to handle their.
Correct.
Um and and I would try to find some way of of getting that out there in the press, you know, but I don't know that this is what's driving this as much as anything else. It's not to restrict or punish Torrington people, it's really trying to figure out all the people who are taking advantage.
Who are taking advantage of the good nature of the the Torrington taxpayers.
Taking advantage and that, I I was strongly suggest to hide and use that as, you know, very relieved.
And and building something that is sustainable, you know, as as I said, I mean.
Intract and then and then find a solution.
What we pay um for waste and recycling collections is significant, you know. You know, we go through the budget process every year, you know, how, and that's just not a budget you can cut, because we just have to do it. So we just have to look at ways as, you know, where there are abuses and, um you know, where we could potentially um. You know, cut those costs, uh the abuse costs.
Yeah, trying to identify those kinds of apartments that clearly take, you know. Putting part of our house under the side of what they should, and and trying to get the, and and figuring out ways of having conversations with those apartment owners. As to what they are or are not doing and why, and getting control, getting a handle on.
Yeah, but I mean, and and keeping.
Used to be.
Yeah. And that's why we need to date it.
Well, that's why you need to name, but the publicity of this, you know, I'm saying, getting that word out, that take on, I think it's hugely important.
Sophie, earlier, when we were talking about our mass notification, this is a perfect example of how we can get mass notification. To all of our property owners and taxpayers.
Yeah.
You know, why aren't we doing this?
Why are you doing?
Yes, so instead of going to Facebook and airing your complaint about it, you know, there's contact information, they call Linda.
Yeah.
You know, and Linda can give them the, you know, the background, or provide a, you know, a. Um quick sprint, you know, here's the reason, this is what we're trying to accomplish. But again, remind those members of the council that were working with us through the budget. This was very much discussed in the budget season last year, and it was identified as a priority area that we needed to get to the bottom of. So um I know if you want to give a chance to.
Well, Ray and I discussed this, actually, this goes back many, many years ago, when I first started working for the city. Uh Jerry, Rollette and I were talking about recycling, and he had mentioned the position of recycling coordinator. And I said to him, if that position ever becomes viable, I want to be considered, because this is my passion. Um I've been recycling since it first became, you took your labels off your cans, and you rinsed out your cans. And you separated everything, and um it's just, it's something we all need to do, and we have to save our planet. We have to save our taxpayers' money, and I was in Waterbury yesterday, and I was absolutely disgusted at the. Amount of trash and garbage everywhere, I just, but anyway, so when this uh opportunity arose. Uh I was happy to jump on the bandwagon and jump on board and work with all you people. And my goal, our goals, is to increase our recycling. And the way to do that is to develop a plan to get ambassadors in the community who will get the word out. Of what we're paying, why we're paying it, and how we can reduce it. I want to um create a website of some sort. Um which it would be a forum for the residents to input their hopefully good ideas, and not too many disparaging ideas. Of how to improve their recycling. Uh want to go to the local schools and start with the kids when they're small, and still the importance of packaging. And, you know, what's, you know, we're all concerned with our carbon footprint, but what's your recycling footprint? When when you go to, you know, a takeout place and you get. Four styrofoam containers and three little plastic cups and other stuff. Is that really necessary, or could things be packaged differently if we. Encourage businesses to become more environmentally responsible? Um institute a write-in program to the major offenders. Um mass people writing letters to corporations that say, I'm not going to purchase your product anymore unless you change your packaging. Is going to have an effect on them, it may not affect it this year or next year. But the more people who get on in on board with this and involved with this, they're going to have to change if they want to continue selling their products. Um Ray and I have talked about establishing um a take it or leave it type swap shop. I'm not sure if you're familiar with these, Lynchfield has one, Winston Winchester has one. Um I had a friend who lived in Higginham had them, they have one, they're all over the place. You have a useful item that you don't need anymore, except throwing it in the garbage, you bring it to the swap shop. And somebody goes, oh, I need that, and they take it home, it doesn't end up in the landfill. That's gonna probably be down the road, because there's gonna be budgeting concerns and all that, so we have to kind of cut. See what we can save by increasing our recycling and reducing our waste, to maybe be able to afford something like that. Um I was talking to Ray about establishing a brush station, a brush dump. Um the town I grew up in had a brush dump for residents to go. Any time of the year, people are buying houses in Torrington right now like crazy. And a lot of these properties have been overgrown and ignored for a long time, and these people come in and they they cut down the overgrown trees. And they trim back the bushes, and every week I get calls saying, what do I do with this stuff? And I have to say, um, we don't have a place for you to put it, we collect it twice a year. So if we had a space where we could do our own composting and recycling of brush. And you could do it on a fee basis if you wanted to, you could do it on a free basis, and then. You could do it on a free basis and then sell the compost to the residents. There's lots of different opportunities and and options available for that. We want to establish an organics recycling. I've been sitting in on some of the state DEEP and Waste Zero Zoom calls, learning about this because this is, that part is new to me. Where we're trying to encourage people to recycle their organics in a separate container and see what that does to the waste stream. Again, ambassadors will be needed to get the word out and get people excited about it and encourage them to do this to, again, save money for the taxpayers, reduce our trash footprint. And of course, save our planet because it's the only one we got. And I'd like to work with some surrounding communities to see if there's any ideas that they have that we can implement here, or maybe we can do something in a more regional format. Maybe we could go with another town that already has a brush dump. And our residents could bring their stuff that, I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody yet, but these are just some ideas that I had. And again, like I said, encourage you to be mindful of their trash footprint, it's just so important. I have a friend who has two, who is, I'm sorry, she has three grandchildren. And one of them took something and just threw it away. And my friend, their grandmother, she said, you can't throw that away, that's recycling. You have to put that in the recycling, you have to wash it up, put it in the recycling. Mom doesn't make me. She wanted to strangle him, but she didn't because, you know, great kids. But anyway, if we teach kids from a young age how important it is, then they grow up and to be more responsible adults. And that's about all I got to say.
Yeah, so so I know I picked the right person. It is, it is really about getting a handle on it, increasing our recycling. You know, you know, changing, changing our mindset and how we think this, you know, to sustain various programs.
The mayor made a very good comment in the paper the other day. And he said, people think that trash just goes away. We throw it out and it just, it just disappears, it doesn't. And we have to tell people and educate people about that, that's so important because it doesn't just go away.
The, thank you. The nice thing about us moving forward with establishing this recycle champion and really getting a handle on our solid waste is, the state is in a solid waste crisis. Cannot say that strong enough, the entire state is in a crisis. They're in crisis mode, they're trying to figure this out. So for Torrington to step out over in front of this thing is really important. And I know that Commissioner Dykes and Deep is always grateful for the fact that we have never shy away from this conversation. And the steps that we've taken to get, get our track on this is is great. So I do thank both of you very much for.
We can be a leader.
Yeah.
We can lead.
And, you know, as I always say, I mean, if anybody ever has any questions, you know, just please reach out to us if you ever want any information. You know, just please reach out to us, you know, for educational materials and 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 Linda's, you know, she she mentioned the ambassadors. And we have, you know, several people in mind that, you know, that I I know are very avid about recycling and, you know, reduction in waste and reduction in trash. And and so we're trying to put that group committee task force, you know, trying to get to that point to assemble that. You know, to to to, you know, develop that path forward for us, for the long term sustainability of, of, you know, the trash. We will entertain any additional questions that anybody has. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. All right, Cheryl, anything, I'll make the same question. Arista, did you, do you want?
Just wanted to give a quick update on our cultural district application. The application has been submitted and we are in the final two steps. The last step is a walkthrough with the state. And they will schedule that after our cultural district commission is appointed. The cultural district committee will be a subcommittee of the Torrington Development Corporation and they are meeting next Tuesday to put that committee together. And appoint all those members, and then after that, we'll be able to work with the state and get our walkthrough scheduled and then get our approval, but so far, everything is looking positive and we've made it through a couple of steps and we're now at the last phase.
We're still online, you're still on, how are you?
We are, still for a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, anything else? Okay, I'm eleven, I want to adjourn motion to consider this as a fair enough. All right, starting to the screen, anything tonight, Councilman Nene?
No, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Oliver.
Uh, no, thank you, fair.
You all sound like you have a terrible cold.
Uh, just getting over COVID, so.
Councilwoman, anything for this evening?
I only just realized we have three weeks till that referendum for our extra twenty million for the school project. So remember, everybody to tell their friends to go vote.
Well said, and that's that's the other reason I'm thinking with this mass notification, how easy is it if all of those fourteen thousand households are signed up? That we can send that notice and remind you all. So excellent point, thank you for reminding, Councilman Morgan.
Uh, just, school starts again tomorrow and let's hope for the best with COVID numbers and all that stuff.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think staff and bus drivers are are a problem, you know, there's so many sick individuals, so I know that school is not in session tomorrow.
This working mom in the group got that notice. Nobody's going to school tomorrow.
Councilwoman Rowett, anything? Okay, thank you. I want to add, I want to motion to open the unit back to public on agenda items. Thank you, Councilman Dunnell. And Councilwoman Rowett, all in favor? Back to the public on agenda items. Seeing here none, there'll be no further business before the board, I want to adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you, have a good night.